Hello, everyone. This is Lauren Steiner and welcome to tonight's edition of the Robust Opposition. This is the third in a series of interviews that I am doing with city council candidates here in Asheville, North Carolina. And I'm pleased to have with me tonight Will Hornaday, who is a graphic designer by profession. I believe this is the first political office he's ever run for. But Will here, how you doing, Will?
I'm doing good. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. I'm going to ask you what I ask all my guests to talk about first, which is tell us a little bit about your background. Talk about your childhood, your education, your professions that you've had, your family, anything you want to tell us about your background before we get into why you're running for office, your qualifications and your platform positions.
Okay. Well, first, thanks for having me on. I really appreciate it. And I was born in Washington DC. My dad worked for the government and we, for the most part, lived out on a farm in Northern Virginia with about a mile or two between neighbors, right on the West Virginia border. And then my dad got transferred to Dallas in about 1980 when I was going into sixth grade. And we stayed in Texas where I went to college, at the University of Texas in Austin. And at that time, it was hard to get a job in Austin. It was, you know, there was government jobs with the state and then jobs with the university. And I kind of got in at an ad agency and worked my way through a bunch of ad agencies until I became a partner at a graphic design firm in Austin. And then we had a son. My wife and I, we got married. Wife and I had a son. And then at some point, we just got tired of Texas and the heat and how expensive it was to be there. And then after, without really any planning, we came to Asheville and worked from here for about a month. And my wife, after two weeks, said she wasn't going back. Wanting to stay married, we moved to Asheville. And without any planning, it was our first adult decision, we said, because, you know, we just hung around our college town, both of us, for 25 years and then came here. And that's what brought me to Asheville. And
And how many years ago was that?
It was 10 years ago.
Okay. So you've been working as a graphic designer ever since?
I've been a graphic designer for 25 years. So, yeah, that's something
Do you have your own firm? Do you work with someone else or are you freelance?
No, we have our own firm. My wife and I work together and we have clients. The Nature Conservancy has been a longtime client. We do a series of women's conferences in California, Pennsylvania, Texas and Pennsylvania. For 20 years, we've done those and they're really large and it's really fun to work on. And it's really fun just to watch those and go to those conferences. I'm usually one of the few males at those conferences. And it's a really great perspective to be in that room with 5,000 to 10,000 other women who are making big change and real difference in their community, in their state, in the world. You know, from Michelle Obama to a high school principal in Philadelphia. It's been, that's been one of my favorite experiences is that client.
So maybe that was one of your inspirations for running for office? That's the area I want to move into next. Why you decided to run for city council? And have you ever served on any boards or commissions before? Been involved in the Asheville community?
I have been involved in the Asheville community. And that started before, when our son went into kindergarten, I asked his kindergarten teacher, what can I do to help at the school? And she said, I need help making copies. So every Friday since kindergarten, up until about middle school, when I was no longer welcome at the school by my son, I made copies for his homeroom teacher. And that kind of rolled into other projects at the school. And then I found out that's here at Claxton Elementary, which is our neighborhood school that we walk to just down the street. And as that kind of rolled into being on the PTO. And the PTO at Claxton Elementary was well-run. They didn't need any, they had it down pat. And so I just looked for something that wasn't there. And that was, I was the only dad on the PTO, I think, at that time. And I created a group of dads called the Bear Pack, where we volunteered to do just tasks. And so as the leader of that, of the Bear Pack, the rule was, there's no meetings. There's one email. And if you can come, good. If you can't, come to the next one. And we had about 40 members the first year. And it's still going at the school. And it's been fun to see that live on after I left the school and went on to, you know, our son graduated out. And so that was what first started me in sort of making little change. And I'm a big believer in little change. And then the Charlotte Street Business Association formed and our office is down on Charlotte Street at the time. And I got involved with that. And that became a lot of talk about the road diet was coming. And it had been along Charlotte Street, from a four lane to a three lane conversion. And it had been festering around for years, 20 years, actually. And there was always a breakdown between the business community, the neighborhoods or the city not wanting to take the political risk, and I understand, of angering one or the other group. So nothing ever happened. But I think the timing was right and the communication was right. And as I became president of the Charlotte Street Business Association, we were pretty pivotal in getting the community and the businesses and the city all together and getting back through to a real plan that worked. And what happened, one funny little story on that, and then I'll stop talking for a second, is we made a city planner boot camp day. And we rolled out a big, long piece of paper and we drew out Charlotte Street. I drew it out and then showed how it would look. And we had people come in with Post-It notes and say, what would work and what wouldn't? What they wanted to see, what they wish they could see? And most of that stuff kind of appeared on the street and it worked out. And it was listening to people, just like at the elementary school. I need copies made. I know, I want a crosswalk. I want it to be safe. We had neighbors who were bringing, using their own money to pay to get flags to cross at Taco Temple, right at Broad, where it hits Charlotte Street. And just because it wasn't safe and there was no reason for, and now there's flashing lights and we got the speed limit lowered. It was a real win-win for everybody. And it felt good that we got, we got that log jam done. And we had help from a lot of groups. It's not a one person didn't make that happen. But it was fun to be a spoke in that wheel. And then from there, I've been, I'm currently the president of my neighborhood association, Albemarle Park. And I'm a vice chair on the Asheville-Bunkham County Historic Resources Commission, which is a quasi-judicial commission overseeing local historic districts, the four local historic districts in Asheville.
Well, I met you during the Safe Charlotte Street protest at the wrap. And I know that you're very involved in that group. Let's talk about your main issues that you're running on. I would assume that development and keeping, one of the slogans was keeping Charlotte, Charlotte Street, not Charlotte or something. So maybe you can talk about your top three issues. What you see are the biggest problems facing Asheville and how you intend to solve them were you to be elected?
Okay. Well, my top three priorities are responsible growth, the environment and accountability. And they all kind of lock into each other. And how we grow as a city affects our environment. And we need to be aware of that. Our, when we lose 1.4 miles of, square miles of tree canopy, we're doing something wrong. And we need to look at what we're losing and how that's affecting our environment. And so that, so growth plays into environment. And then community involvement is the accountability part. It's making sure the community is coming along for it and understands where we're going. Communication can improve. You know, everybody's, the last couple of years have been tricky with the pandemic. Everybody knows that. And everybody's, should give some leeway to that. But let's move past that and get to a point where we can get together and talk more. I heard a, someone was saying that the public comment being, there needs to be more public comment at city council. At city, at that point, it's pretty, it's pretty late. And public comment should happen ahead of that in a more robust way. And city council can maybe move around the city and be in East Asheville or be in South Asheville and West Asheville for a meeting and have key city staff there to, there's questions people have about whether that's police, sanitation, you know, major works, big capital improvement projects, things that are happening that are long range that, you know, it's a little hard to get people on the phone. But if there was a city council meeting and they had support staff there, let's kind of, let's hear from our different parts of our communities. Our cities are complex organizations that are, have micro groups. And there's lots of different interests and lots of different needs. And there's not a blanket statement for everything. So let's, let's, let's move that way some. And, but we need to watch the environment. The, our rivers are suffering because a bit, a part of that is development. There's more water running down to, through our creeks and into the French Broad. And if we don't do something about the French Broad, why would Hendersonville or Marshall or, you know, let's lead. We, we're a, we can be a leader in clean environmental policies.
Can you delve into that a little bit more? Because you're the first candidate that I've interviewed that's spoken about that. And in California, I was very involved in water issues, as I'm sure you can imagine, being that we've had multiple droughts and agriculture, you know, Central Valley in California is the breadbasket of the nation. You know, there's just so many water issues back there. But talk a little bit more about the water issues here and what you specifically can do on the city level to fix them.
Well, part of that's going to be taken away from the city in May when the EPA steps in because the French Broad River, 19 miles of the French Broad River, the Swananoa River, Bacoat and Hayth Branch, both, all four are going to be listed as impaired waterways. So at that point, the federal government is going to step in. So it's an opportunity to make some real change. But those, all those waterways had been success stories, but we're losing that battle. And part of that's development. Agriculture is another, and that's a big thing to deal with. We were flying, our son is going to college next year. And we were flying out about two weeks ago. And there was a pretty minor rain. But when you fly out of the airport, the Mills River and the French Broad River is, it's all bog and it's all washing, all the agriculture is hitting that and going into the river. And our river, last thing I saw was like eight, I haven't looked at it in a minute. And there hasn't been an update. But it's something like 87% of the time, the French Broad River fails water quality standards. And that's a big part of our industry. That's a big moneymaker for the city is the, is the river. We, we need to respect that river and respect our guests who are getting in those inner tubes and going down the French Broad River. Especially what we're having downstream in Woodfin as a water park is being made for whitewater.
I guess I'm asking you specifically what needs to be done and what the city can do. You mentioned the EPA, but
Right. Well, it's, there's two things we can do right now. We can hire an urban forester. And an urban forester could look at our tree canopy and make decisions on how we proceed with our open space and how we protect our trees. There's not a tree protected in this town. You can cut down any tree you want. And that tree canopy absorbs both rainfall and is good for carbon absorption. So having an urban forester who's right now, this gets a little wonky and tell me if this makes sense to you because sometimes I say things. This, the urban forester is in charge of distributing funds that is paid in lieu fees from developers who say, oh, we're building over our allotment. So we're putting money into either reparations or tree fund. But until there's an urban forester, we can't distribute that money. And there's over, you know, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars already sitting in that fund that can't be spent. So for improvements, planting trees, protecting trees, protecting more of our environment. And then there's stormwater ordinance. There's a stronger, and a stronger stormwater ordinance was been proposed by the Stormwater Task Force. And there's been, there hasn't been any action on it yet. And so that would include some initial rain gardens, things that slow the water down, different. Right now, our infrastructure is aging and it can't quite handle the demand that's, that's being put on it right now. You have sinkholes, you know, and that's, and that's where it gets tricky because there's so much of our stormwater infrastructure that I don't think is quite mapped. It's always a surprise when, oh, that's a sinkhole because 100 years ago, when that was a private development, somebody did something that is now failing. And we're a city that has older infrastructure and it's time to address that. And the city is, but let's make sure we all understand how we're going to address it, what's the timeline and how that's going to affect downstream. Because we're going to have more, more heavy storms with the climate change we're experiencing.
Yeah. Now, you mentioned the environment. You know, you talk about trees. Trees aren't just something beautiful to look at. People should know that they also capture carbon. And the city does have a decarbonization plan. So keeping existing trees is a very important part of that. Also permeable surfaces for driveways and parking lots. I haven't really seen anything about that. But that was a solution that we talked about in California, not paving over so many things with asphalt. There are alternatives.
Did you have a percentage of permeable cover or impermeable cover?
I don't know. I mean, I could probably find out by contacting my friends at Food and Water Watch, who I work very closely with. But I mostly work fighting fracking with them, which is not an issue here in North Carolina, thank God. But, you know, you were talking earlier about accountability and I'm assuming that that goes hand in hand with transparency because that was something my guest last night, Allison Scott, spoke about. And the opportunity, you know, for people to make their public comment from home, for instance, because that was something that was made available to people during the pandemic and they took that away. And she was making a point that I agreed with, that why shouldn't that continue? So people don't have to drive all the way down there and wait around for a few hours to make a two-minute comment. But you expanded that. You were talking about maybe town halls way before it gets to the point of public comment, which leads into another question that I asked her about participatory budgeting, which a lot of cities are doing, where you can actually get the input. Because the budget is sort of a plan and it's a statement of values. So if you have the people participate in that, and Bunkham County is doing that to some extent right now. They're doing a comprehensive plan and they're having meetings all over the county for people to provide input. So can I assume that you would be interested in, in something like those two ideas?
Well, we currently have a comprehensive plan, as you, I'm sure you're aware. And this is it. It's from 2018 and goes to 2035. And it's, you know, it's our guidelines and it's 300
Were the people involved in that?
They were involved in that. And it's a, it's a visioning document. It's sort of guardrails. This is our North Star. You know, it's about, we want to be inclusive. You know, it's, it's not concrete steps. And that's where more strategic plans that are currently based on about a one-year outlook are set right now. And for a while, they were four years. And but when it got reduced down to one year, it's sort of reactionary and it's things that are hitting you right now. And it can kind of drift you off to the side. And, and I think it would, it would help us if our strategic plans move back to a four-year, a longer goal so that we can have six steps to get to our comprehensive plan goals is, is what we want. And, but yes, the community was very much involved in input, same as the county is doing now with the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is something everyone should read and kind of understand because it kind of goes back to development. We have a lot of times stressing, this is good for our comprehensive plan because it covers these items in our development. But there's also the environment and the community. And there's other part buckets in our comprehensive plan that all need to move up together. And if it's just development and housing that moves up and everything else stays down, we're not moving forward as well. So I think we can work together from our silos and move towards our comprehensive plan in a more cohesive way, that's more collaborative with each, each part and each, now, each part of our comprehensive plan.
Now, you mentioned housing. Affordable housing is a big concern for people. People can't afford to buy in the city. The rents have gone up 25%. What are your solutions to the affordable housing crisis in Asheville?
Well, the first thing I would suggest is not tearing down housing for affordable housing. And adaptive reuse of our spaces is necessary. And, and not only for housing, for businesses. You think about all the small businesses that are now big businesses in Asheville that started off in the basement of a bar or what's a bar now? That's, it's a, it's where innovation grows. And it's where I, I and probably you lived when we were younger is an old house that was broken up into a fireplace. You know, and, and it's, and it's, you know, I, I play poker once a month with a group of people and they've been here a long time, much longer than me. And that's been really fun to learn more about the city. But, you know, they, some of them used to live in Blue Spiral in downtown in the seventies. And it was, that got moved out one ring. And we keep moving that ring farther and farther out of what is artist space, affordable space. And it's, it doesn't go back. It's, it's hard to change. But by keeping our existing housing stock and we can do more for affordable housing. There's also, I looked up that there is over 700 vacant homes in Asheville, just not occupied at all. And if you're, whoever's listening, if you just kind of ask your mailman, how many vacant houses are on your route? They'll tell you because they go by them every day. And, you know, power's turned off. It's, it's just a dead address. They're
You think these are like vacation houses?
These are flat out, no electricity vacant.
Wow.
And they're all over this town. And it's something that I think we need to look at as a city. If we're really feeling the pinch on housing, let's look at ways to use the housing we have, whether it's underutilized businesses that can be converted into housing. Because a lot of people are working remotely or we, the world changed two years ago. And same as you're saying with community input at, at council meetings, let's take the best things that we've learned from this pandemic and let's make a shift. And maybe our comprehensive plan needs to adjust to some of these shifts that we didn't predict in 2018. I don't think anyone predicted two years of uncertainty. And I commend everybody at the city for getting us through that. It was very difficult. Now let's take our experiences and let's do a little bit better. Let's, 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 let's do more.
You know, you got my interest piqued with those vacant houses. I'm almost thinking it would be a great show, like a forensic, you know, get a detective to examine, like, why is this house vacant? Who owns it? Why are they sitting on this piece of property? Don't they want to sell it? You know, there's a lot, there's stories behind each of those.
There are. It could be a family that had a death that is out of town and they've just never come in. But if you just walk around and look, there's, there's, there's all the signs are there. You don't need to ask your mailman, but always talk to your mailman. That's the first thing you should do because your mailman knows everything about everybody.
Exactly. Now, a related question to affordable housing is the homeless crisis. Now, partially, that's caused by lack of affordable housing, but it's also caused by substance use disorder. It's caused by mental illness. It's caused by PTSD, returning vets. It's a multi-faceted crisis. Do you think that the city is doing the best they can for our unhoused neighbors? If not, what would you be doing differently?
You know, it's hard to parachute in and say the city, and it'd be, and say the city's doing everything wrong in that. It's, it was also magnified by the stressors of the pandemic. And I think that Dogwood offering to come in and pay for the, to have a consultant to bring together the groups to find out how to move forward, it's, it's, it's water under the bridge and it's what we should all commit to it. And let's, but I'd like to see the city, county, the police, the communities, the Coalition of Asheville Neighborhoods, for everyone to sort of, and plus, of course, the nonprofits that are involved. Be loved and
Homeyard Band?
Yeah. To have, to make sure that everybody has a voice there that, that, so that we can kind of cover all of our bases on this. And if that's not done, then we're never going to proceed. And I'm, I'm certain that's going to And I'm certain that's going to happen. So I am hopeful. Nobody has the solution to this. Every city you go to, you visit, it's out there. It's really visible. It's the tent along the street. And.
Speaking of tents, what do you think about managed camping? Or sanctuary camping, or whatever word they want to call it, which is, you know, if people, if homeless people are going to not want to go to shelters for a variety of reasons, maybe because women don't feel safe there, they could get raped because they can't bring their pets, who are their emotional support, because they have to be clean and sober, if it's a religious one, and they can't be. If they're going to be out in tents and creating encampments, rather than busting up those encampments and criminalizing homelessness, why not have a situation where you have a legal encampment, where you have security, and you have bathrooms, and you have people come in and provide the meals, and you have services? I don't understand why Esther Manheimer and so many of the other council members have ruled it out. It seems only Kim Roney is in favor of it. What is your position on it?
My position is that I've seen places where that is happening. And it's newer, I think. I don't think it's, there's any long tenure examples of that. So I think every option that's on the table should be looked at and examined. And I may have misunderstood, but I think that the camping in parks, that threw everyone for a loop. And it, that's where I felt there was a lot more pushback. And then.
No, it shouldn't be in parks, because parks are for the enjoyment of everybody, but it should be in city-owned land.
I think that's something that should be looked at and find a way to do it. Yes, like I said, I wouldn't rule out any tool in our tool box of tools to try and address this situation at all.
Now, relating to the homeless, a lot of people feel unsafe around the homeless, and they point to crime being in this 100-yard perimeter of the homeless. I don't really know that that's accurate, but that's what some people are saying. And I'm wondering what your positions are regarding public safety. Do you think that crime has increased in Asheville, stayed the same? It was less. What kinds of crimes are you concerned with? Do you think, you know, the Asheville PD was not intentionally defunded, but it's 40% short of officers? Yeah, 40% of what they're budgeted for, and they have the money to pay for, they don't have. So that's a tremendous, and, you know, there was an article in the Citizen Times saying, here are the kinds of nonviolent crimes we're just not responding to anymore. So what is your position as a candidate on public safety in Asheville?
Well, I think we should pay our officers more. I think we should train them more. I think we should give them the services and support they need, whether that's from health care services to mental health care services. And we should support them as much as we can, because it's a needed part of our community, that I think everyone agrees that. And it's been another thing that since May 25th, 2020, policing changed with George Floyd. And I think that's had a ripple effect in, with the officers and with the community. And.
Well, it actually changed, it's been for a long, long time, for 2020. It's just that's when the George.
That's the most recent, I guess.
Test broke out, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that it's something that's unresolved in our community right now. And it's something that we should address. And I, and I, there has been no funds cut to the police. It's just fewer officers. And they are responding to fewer things. But when I go door to door and I talk to neighbors, and one neighbor in particular stands out in my mind, who said she was, you know, wants to move to somewhere more socialist than is a, but, and she says, younger me would hate me for saying this, but I, I am impacted in a tremendous way by homeless coming through her yard and stealing. It's just, it just changed her whole neighborhood. And almost everyone in the neighborhood is on board with that. And it's a huge stressor for those neighbors when that impact comes. Same with South French Broad. It was, they didn't feel safe walking on their street because of some of the problems. But we've been a, the VA being here is 40% of our homeless, are vets from the last count. The new count's coming out at the end of the month. So it's something that touches all communities and something we should address.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, you know, one of the things you can tell people is that it may seem scary, but as a matter of fact, more crimes are perpetrated on the homeless than by the homeless. So, you know, some of it is just unsightly. And, you know, I remember when I was in my next door in Sherman Oaks, California, which is in the San Fernando Valley, and they were trying to put, because the homeless situation is so bad, people should know there's 63,000 homeless in Los Angeles County. So 527 people here in Asheville doesn't seem to be as big of a crisis when you compare it to that. But of course, you don't want to have any homeless people if you can do something about it. But anyway, they finally decided they were going to put an emergency shelter in each of the 15 supervisory districts. And we got a lot of comments in the next door by people saying, oh, no, you know, they're going to be coming to our district to be in that, you know, in that facility, which is not true. They're already there. You know, they're already defecating on our front lawns as it is. Well, duh, if they have a room, then they'll defecate in their bathroom and not on your front lawn. And, you know, what do I tell my children when we pass by somebody sleeping on the street? You know, like, you tell your children that there's unfortunate people in the world, and there, by the grace of God, go I, and this is why we have to have compassion. So it's just, and, you know, the more I talk like this, the more I was reported, and I finally got booted off of my own next door. But it is, it's like, we saw what happened here, the Ramada Inn, which was supposed to be used for emergency shelter, where the homeless were already living because of the pandemic. That got shot down by some vocal citizens. They had 600 people sign that petition. And the rest of the people in Asheville that are more compassionate, they didn't get involved. And the people that were, I guess you can call them NIMBYs. I don't mean to say that with a bad connotation, but, you know, they're basically not in my backyard. You know, have your homeless shelters somewhere, but not literally in my backyard, which for so many people it was. And the city council kind of capitulated to that. So I'm kind of curious, and I know I'm putting you on the spot here, but if you were taking that vote that night, would you have bucked that neighborhood group and say, nope, we're going to use this Ramada Inn for the homeless, and that's that?
I was introduced to that group through an interview. One of the first interviews, the first interview, when I became a candidate. And that is a passionate neighborhood that had sort of a, there wasn't trash pickup, there wasn't security, there wasn't, there wasn't, there was loitering, there was, it was creeping out in all directions. There, it wasn't quite exactly just a bunch of NIMBYs. There was, it was, I understood exactly what they felt, where the homeless shelter took over their neighborhood. And it created a lot of questions. And I think that what should and is going to happen as that Ramada gets moved into private hands is that it will have stronger services supporting that and keeping the businesses from feeling threatened around there. Because I think there was a lot of pressure put on that neighborhood that didn't quite feel right. Where the days in, I spoke to someone there, and there was a lot better communication on how that was going to work and how it would be. And the neighbors are by and far, I think, better with how that's going than how Ramada went. So.
Yeah, I think the problem was the implementation of that. It just happened because of the pandemic, and the group that was set to manage it was not, you know, up to speed. And a lot of things did fall through the cracks. I want to talk about, and I haven't asked any of my other guests this, but, you know, the management of the city. The city pays Deborah Campbell. She's the city manager. I think something like $256,000 a year, which is a very big salary. But I've been following, you know, the news for the past year and a quarter since I've lived here. And I've read that a lot of people are leaving, a lot of city employees are leaving the inclusivity department. I don't know if that's exactly what it's called, but.
Which term?
Yeah, the head of that left, and then the secondary head left. And now, apparently, it's fully staffed again. But a lot of people were leaving because, you know, they weren't, they didn't feel valued. They didn't feel like their input was being taken. Have you thought about this issue or not? Would you, would you take a look at her contract and the kind of job that she's doing, seeing as, you know, you guys are just advisors, if you will, but these people work for you, and, you know, part of management is to make sure you have the right people in place?
I, that's a great question that I've thought about a lot. There, through those women's conferences that I go to, there was a speaker who talked about how employees are different now than when he was a kid. When he was a kid, your boss told you what to do. You did what your boss said, and you were paid at the end of the week. Now, people, a generation below me has, wants more control, wants more say in their, in their work destiny. There's a lot invested in their work. It's a hard job at the city. There's a lot of people who call and yell at you, and there's a lot of people who call and say nice things. But there, there's a need to have more ownership of that decision and more latitude and more strength. And I think that's where we can, where we as an entire city can grow towards is understanding how the workforce has changed in the last 25 years and what employees expect. When you hear that they're not feeling valued and they're not respected and no amount of money fixes that, there has to be some sort of a shift. And it, I don't think it's isolated, and I don't think it's a specific person's fault. It's sort of a big company mentality. And there's, am I saying, is what I'm saying making sense? Because it makes sense to me in my head than when.
Yeah, you know, I've been thinking a lot about this with unions. I've been doing a lot of shows on unions, as a matter of fact, on Monday. And this was all spurred by my college, my alma mater, Wesleyan University, the RAs, the resident advisors formed a union. And it had the distinction of being the first union that was voluntarily accepted by the college. The college didn't fight them, but that's a very Wesleyan thing to do. It's extremely progressive politically. And then there's going to be some other students, Grinnell, Kenyon, possibly Fordham, where the graduate student TAs unionize. So we see this big movement with Amazon, with Starbucks workers, because not only these professional workers that you're talking about, even more so, these minimum wage workers. They don't feel respected. They don't feel valued. And what was really interesting, because I do a lot of research on this, is that in the process of unionizing, these Starbucks workers are starting to feel more cohesive, like they really feel like they have more of a family. You know, Starbucks calls them partners, but they didn't really feel like partners before. And what's even worse with these minimum wage jobs is, because my son has them. He's got ADHD. He couldn't do college, so now he's stuck with minimum wage jobs, unless I can figure out something else for him. But what they do is they don't give you your schedule until like two days before the work week begins, and it's always different. You don't even have 30 hours. So you can't really have a second job because you don't have the set schedule. And if the business is not busy, they'll send you home early, and they won't pay you, even though they told you you were going to work for six hours. I think the law is they have to pay you for four, so you do get that at least. But it's just, they call it precarious, the precarious class, because their work is so precarious to them. And you know, they've had this thing they've called the Great Resignation. And this is why there's so many, there's such a shortage of workers in Asheville, because people are starting to think, and it helped with the assistance that they were getting, the big government assistance, where they were like, no, I'm not going to go to work and suffer these kind of conditions, you know? I'm going to really sit here and think about what I want to do. And I don't know how they're, you know, everybody thought, especially the Republican states, that when they cut off that stimulus check that they were getting every month, oh, boy, now these people are going to have to go back to work. But that didn't really happen. So we're still in this position that you're speaking about, where everybody's kind of reevaluating. And, you know, it's happening with adjunct professors. There was this big scandal with UCLA, where they were advertising for a science professor, and they said, we're not going to pay you, you know? And this got out, and they were like, oh, you know, I guess we got to pay her now. And you read stories about adjunct professors sleeping in their cars. You read stories about female adjunct professors doing sex work on the side. I mean, this is crazy. We know we don't pay our teachers enough. We know we don't pay our childcare workers enough. You know, that's another issue we haven't discussed, which is, not only are the rents increasing in Asheville, 25%, but the salaries, people don't even make a living wage. And I'm wondering if you've thought of some out-of-the-box ideas about what could be done about affordability, having, not to do right now with talking about housing, but any other ways, knowing that, because of Dylan's rule, I guess, you cannot, Asheville cannot create its own minimum wage. Have you thought about any other ways to make?
More careers here to grow in. Like, so the Explorer Asheville spends millions of dollars on advertising, but that's not spent on an ad agency within our town. It's not spent on media placement within our town. Let's kind of focus that and build ourselves a creative economy. Get the arts and the creative economy growing. And then, so that would be just an example of focusing what is coming from the hotel tax and putting it back into real jobs that can pay people. And that goes, your printing happens here, you know, all kinds of parts of the, of that piece of puzzle could stay in Buncombe County and Asheville. I want to, you know, to protect our built environment and our, and our overall environment, I would like to see a deconstruction ordinance. And a deconstruction ordinance, which is right now, working in Portland, Milwaukee, and San Antonio is in the finals ramp-up stage, is, you know, 70% of a house that is to be. Is to be taken down is reused. It's board by board, brick by brick, window, copper, everything comes out. And goes back into a habitat for humanity or a private company that hires um hard to employ people. Uh a wage to take apart these houses and keep that out of our landfill. Right now we're sending eight hundred uh tons of. Of of valuable building material that, you know, the old growth lumber and strong wood and and bricks and stones. That's all um from I'm talking about the thirteen houses on Charlotte Street that held thirty five affordable housing uh units. Is all going to the landfill. So if we get a deconstruction ordinance that can um that ramps up. First, we incentivize it and then we make it mandatory. Uh it'll be more.
How does it get paid for again?
How do you get paid for it? Is 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 the the uh developer has to pay to deconstruct the house. So it costs eighty percent more than demolition. So it's a gentle hammer to not tear down. Uh not to uh for our environment's sake, throw away this valuable building materials, glass, windows and so.
And is that something that the city of Asheville can do, even though we're a Dylan's rule kind of state?
As much as we can do, yes, it's and that is a a part of a city uh of uh, yes, it's something we can do. And um and it's something we can start encouraging and then enforcing and then. Uh and it brings jobs and it brings businesses and it and it makes us serious about climate change. We're not.
I love that idea because it's a win win. It's got so many missions, you know, you're keeping stuff out of the landfill, you're employing hard to employ people. You're, you know, teaching them trades.
And we're using that wood and putting it in 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 coffee shops, bars, restaurants, homes. And you see the old wood and it's it 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 also makes you appreciate it more when you say, oh, man, you've got real brick in your house, you know?
Yeah.
But that's that's I'm a preservationist and it hurts me to say bring a house down, but if it comes down. Let's 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 put it back up. Let's not take it to the landfill. And if anybody wants, I it's shocking for me to see. In 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 this climate, in this with this amount of pressure on climate. That to see a bulldozer pushing down those houses is something doesn't make sense. It's not, it's frankly embarrassing and um so we can do better and um. Uh we can ask for better. We can demand more from our developers. This is a desirable town. This isn't going to be the only um and it's not just North Asheville. It's all parts of our town are going to uh start to experience these pressures. And um we're going to see more and more development uh targeted us. And I think our self-esteem as us as a city and what makes us an important, beautiful uh mountain town. Uh let's let's protect that and but we can make room for more people and we do have a lot of uh empty space. Let's build incrementally uh so it's less impact on the neighborhoods and build it in more places.
Yeah, um so we're running out of time. I want to combine two questions into one.
Hour.
I gotta eat dinner. Um, two questions into one, you know, we talked about affordability and, you know, there's you can pay people more. But you can also provide more services that people have to pay for, provide them for free. Um, for instance, public transportation. A lot of people are saying that public transportation should be more plentiful and less costly during the pandemic. They made um well, actually it wasn't during the pandemic. They didn't want people taking public transportation, but. There was some time when they made public transportation free somewhere. I can't remember when and why. But um, you know, the public transportation here isn't very good. I've noticed that and I don't take it. But I don't feel guilty because I drive an electric car, so I'm not spewing carbon, you know, into the atmosphere. Um, but I do think for people that have to, you know, that don't have electric cars and they have to buy gas, we see now. Especially in the last month, when the gas prices have risen, how expensive it is. And then if you're being pushed further and further out, as you said before, you're spending even more gas to come in and work and your salary hasn't gone up. So what are your positions on public transportation, increasing it, making it, you know, either free to very little cost? And also childcare. My friend John Mirish, who's running for reelection on the city council in Beverly Hills, this is California. Is proposing to the council that the city provide free preschool for every resident and for every employee of the city. And it would be preschool and childcare. And I asked him, how are you going to pay for that? It sounded like a Republican asking him, how are you going to pay for that? And, you know, he didn't know yet. He said, look, what we do in Beverly Hills is we have a study, you know, we set up a committee to study it. And we figure out, like I said, how many people are going to benefit? How much is it going to cost? How are you going to pay for it? And he said, look, we have to put the idea out there. Um, so what are your two positions? I mean, what are your positions regarding those two issues, public transportation and childcare?
Well, early child um childhood education is tremendously important in the childcare. The uh Buncombe County. Has so the way I understand it is it costs about nine hundred ninety one dollars a month. To have a uh child in uh early education. Buncombe County and that's and then seven hundred of it is covered by um the Fed. And so that gap of two hundred fifty, whatever, is um Buncombe County is covering that for four hundred and ninety one families. And that just happened. And what can happen is the city can do the same and at least match that. Where we start um prioritizing uh, you know, the first four years of life are 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 critical in education. And for us to stay ahead and to um keep. Education as a priority, that's something that we as a city should look at ways of funding. And um there's groups now working with that and the county uh can help us. And I think what better relation uh 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 expanding that relationship with the county uh is important. To uh help with more education uh and childcare for uh working families. Um, that's um something that came up at just talking to neighbors. Uh and I happen to be a neighbor of my mom who has uh in Norwood Park who um. Is passionate about this and is leading this effort and it's something I'd like to um. Uh bring to council immediately because it's it's really important, you know, we all know it's important.
Mm hmm.
To to meet that gap. It's not a big budget, it's like two hundred fifty a month, but more more families to at least match what the county's doing. Um, it's critical. Public transportation. I want to, this is an idea for a uh shuttle that moves that's targeted for tourists. So that we can get some support from our tourist supporting um funding sources.
The TDA, the TDA.
We're not naming names. The um for a shuttle that goes from downtown to the River Arts. To uh Biltmore Village to West Asheville, that is known places where we want our tourism to be. Let's put our tourists, our let's use our tourism and target it to where we want and have that free shuttle. And allow and and that free shuttle hop on, hop off. Locals can also get on that and come into work. People who work in restaurants lose their first uh hour of work by paying to park downtown. Let's let them move up, catch rides in a little further on the shuttle that's fast, frequent and free. And um and and expand it. You know, I talk to people who say all the time, I don't go downtown. I say, why don't you go downtown? And they said, I can't find a place to park. What if there was a shuttle?
Yeah.
I might take it. It we can't say nobody rides it, so we can't do it and there's um but who. I need to first start talking to bus drivers because bus drivers know how that can work. And the people at art can know how that can work better. And um and the multimodal commission, that's where our commissions are, you know, a big part of our uh. Ways of finding things. That's why, you know, everybody's for these uh commissions is they're experts. Everybody's a little expert in their micro area, you know? If you want to know something about the uh something around my house, I'm the expert on it because, you know, I look at it every day. It's part of my life. And so let's use our um our built in experts um for things.
If you get elected, are you going to want to keep all those commissions? Do you because they want to take a lot of commissions and turn them, you know, end them.
Yeah, they want to take twenty of them and roll it into four and that's um um. I'm not for that and I spoke recently about it and I know a lot of council members were on boards and commissions. And it's a way to uh empower count uh themselves, you know, that that they gained experience and knowledge. Uh by being on those boards and commissions. Don't take that from other people. Let's let's this is uh something that's in our comprehensive plan. Is about our community, an active, engaged community. And that that didn't happen when you uh let people who've been on boards and commissions for uh, you know, four or five years and say. Uh thank you for your service. You're welcome to apply again.
Hmm.
Um, but we're only hiring four. So, you know, it's 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 it just doesn't smell right and let's just this. Let's be the city that we say we are and let's let's be um let's make it easier for people to be involved and not not harder.
Well, that's a wonderful note to end the show on. Now tell people where they can find you if they want to volunteer for your campaign or contribute to it.
Both can be done at uh honorashville.com and um. And uh I really appreciate this, appreciate this Lauren. This was a a fun little chat. I hope uh it was fun for you and. And that you do a bunch more. You're the candidate too.
It sure was and you gave me some great ideas that I hadn't thought about, so I always put everything in the little idea bank here.
Okay, good.
And I'll just let viewers know i- if they're new to my channel because of this show that I um do this show on Facebook Live on my own personal page. And also on YouTube and my Facebook page is facebook.com backslash lauren dot steiner dot L A. My YouTube channel is um Lauren from L A, youtube.com backslash Lauren from L A. My Twitter handle is at Lauren underscore Steiner. And next week, as I mentioned, Monday, I'm going to be interviewing those college students who successfully started unions. Tuesday, I'm interviewing Maggie Ullman, who is also running for city council here in Asheville. Wednesday, I'm interviewing Courtney Booth, who is running for um attorney, I mean, not attorney general, district attorney. And I've got more shows lined up the following week, so.
You are busy.
I am busy, but it's campaign season and we got to get those interviews done. So thanks a lot, Will. Good luck in your campaign.
Appreciate it.
And I'm going to ask you to put in the chat um your website, not here on this chat, but when you go to my page. So people can find you. Thank you very much, viewers, and have a good night.